Specific union policy on the environment shall contribute to the following objectives. The first of those is preserving, protecting and improving the quality of the environment. And then to 1912, union policy on the environment shall aim at a high level of protection, taking into account the diversity of situations in the various regions of the union. It should be based on the precautionary principles and on the principle that preventive action should be taken and environmental damage rectified at source and polluter shall pay. Lord, I draw that to your attention at the outset because the precautionary principle which you there see in Article 1912 is an extremely important principle, namely that all those concerned with the environment do not consider merely what may probably happen, but consider anything of which there is a real risk that it may happen. And as a result of that, the word likely has a rather different meaning in European law than in purely domestic law. If I tell my clerk, my clerk asks me, am I likely to win this appeal? And I say, yes.
Well, it's an old saw likely. I mean, we've had it time and time again in different contexts. We all know it can mean different things.
And here, of course, in European law, it means that there's a whether there's a real chance. Now, the transposition of the habitats directive and in particular Articles 12 and 16 into United Kingdom domestic law has been troublesome because DEFRA and its predecessor departments were slow to appreciate the extent of the sea change in environmental law and how far-reaching is the protective ambit of those two articles. In the result, the 1994 habitats regulations fell foul of the directive that was found in the case of Commission against the United Kingdom, which is in Authorities Bundle One at Tab Six, that in a whole number of respects, the domestic regime was not sufficiently strict. In particular, the domestic provisions under the habitats regulations 1994, provided a planning permission had been granted, a developer could go ahead regardless of the habitats directive. He was carrying out a lawful activity if it had the benefit of planning permission and he could simply go ahead. Now, that was one of the matters which was held to be outside the scope of the directive in Commission against the UK. And that led on to the UK's habitats regulations 2007, which were the government's attempt to comply with the ruling in Commission against the United Kingdom. The importance of this is that, of course, cases such as I'm bringing couldn't really occur under the old habitats regulations unless someone had taken a pure failure to transpose point. Unfortunately, the 2007 regulations themselves failed again to transpose properly the habitats directive, not least because they introduced into Article 12 the concept that you had to have a significant disturbance and that this disturbance had got to affect a significant group of the animals. The Commission then served a reasoned opinion on Her Majesty's government to the effect that the United Kingdom was still in default. And we'll come to look at that in a moment. That then led to the habitats regulations 2009, which are which attempted to meet the Commission's criticisms. And those regulations were the ones which were operative at the time of the planning decision here in July 2009. They have now been replaced by the habitats regulations 2010, but so far as the matters your lordships and your ladyship again to be concerned with, the difference between the 2009 and the 2010 regulations doesn't matter. There's nothing in that point. Why I just mention this is that it's unfortunate that the research work on bats was done at the time when the 2007 regulations were in force. And it is our submission, and I note that they've never heard anything to counter this from the respondent, that all those at Hampshire throughout were working on the 2007 regulations rather than the Euro compliant 2009 regulations, which came into effect at the end of January And when your lordships, if your lordships have the time and the will, look at two of the documents which are in our Bundle Four, Authorities Bundle Four, namely 48, which is the Highways Agency's advice on dealing with bats, and 49, which is English Nature's advice on dealing with protected species including bats. So that's Authorities Bundle Four, 48 and 49. Can I just give your lordship a health warning that those are both written in the context of the 2007 regulations, which everyone now agrees failed properly to transpose the directive? So that they are littered with references to significant impacts and groups of bats and so forth, as indeed were Hampshire County Councils, some of Hampshire County Council's documents in this present case, which is not the relevant test. And lords, the critical part of our case is that we say that committee members were given no advice whatever, that they needed to consider the question whether bats would be disturbed, and they were given no advice as to what disturbance meant in this context. And they were therefore never in a position to begin to apply a strict system of protection for bats, which is what is required by Article 12, 1B of the habitats directive. And lords, what I want to do is to address the court under five heads. First of all, a few words on the impact of the busway on bats. Secondly, to look at the relevant provisions of the habitats directive and their meaning. Thirdly, and extremely briefly, to look at the domestic regulations, the habitats regulations. Fourthly, to explain and I hope make good my point that members and officers never addressed the key questions, which was singularly unfortunate since the local planning authority were effectively judging their own cause, because of course the scheme was promoted by Hampshire County Council, one arm of the county council, and came before the Hampshire County Council as the local planning authority. And then fifthly, to address the issue of discretion, our case being that there could be no proper basis for failing to quash this decision if, as we say, there's been a material error of law. Lords, I get to take it for granted that the court has read or will read the case and the supplementary case. I get to try and take matters extremely fast and I get to ask the court to assume that I'm not resiling from any submissions in those documents merely from the fact I don't mention them to the court this morning. So far as topic one impacts, as the court knows, the proposal which is in effect a new road within parts, a footpath and cycleway for 4.7 kilometres, necessarily involved major clearance and engineering works. This was all to take place in a wooded and shrub-covered linear corridor, which had formerly been a railway line. Trains continued to use the Phase 1A strip up until 1991. The trains haven't used the Phase 1B strip since the time of the Beeching Axe back in the early 1970s. And this wooded and shrubbed linear corridor had a suitable character for bat use. Indeed, it provided an ideal habitat for bats. Necessarily, therefore, the construction of the busway would have impacts on bats. It also would have impact on great crested newts, which are another protected species. But Mrs. Morge decided to confine her case to the issue of bats. She was also very concerned about badgers, and we raise badgers, they're only a domestic protected species, and no issue arises on this appeal in relation to badgers. Lord, in order to save time, I'd ask if a note could be circulated to the court just giving a series of references on bats so that under certain headings, your lordships, my lady, can readily follow the matter. Lords, and I'm not going to read the entirety of this note, just the first three paragraphs. Lords, I say paragraph one, two reports on bats were carried out for the county councillors developers before the decision to grant planning permission. Neither report constituted background papers to the officer's decision report as required by the Local Government Act, but both were placed onto the county council's websites and may or may not have been read by members. And I give the reference and the statement of facts and issues. These two reports were first the detailed environmental appraisal of March 2009, which is in Appendix Two and comes right at the end of Appendix Two behind Tab 12, if the court has that. And that was primarily based on three transect surveys undertaken in October 2008, i.e. at the time of the 2007 regulations, which the report noted was a suboptimal time. In some other words, a bit late in the year to see what bats were there. And then there was a winter tree assessment survey in November 2008. And the DEA recommended that additional surveys should be undertaken in April to June 2009. And the second report was the updated bat survey, and you have that in Appendix Two, Tab Nine. That was produced very late in the day, literally just before the planning committee in July 2009, following additional surveys in May to June 2009, which found no roost on the site itself, but identified two bats not found in the 2008 survey, Miatus species and enthusiast pipistrelle. And lords, can I just correct that? I said two rarer bats. The Miatus is rarer. I'm not wholly confident that an enthusiast pipistrelle is more, so should really say one rarer bat, the Miatus, and one other, an enthusiast pipistrelle. Thirdly, they identified greater levels of foraging and commuting along the disused railway line than had been found in 2008. They identified high levels of foraging activity along the edge of Oakdene Wood, and that is near the join or phases 1A and 1B. And they identified a nearby roost 40 metres away and described as being in close proximity to the woodland, that is Oakdene Wood, with six bats seen entering. And so that your lordships have the position of the roost, could I ask your lordships to go in the call bundle to Appendix One at page 202A? Page 202A, which is an A3 sheet, pull-out sheet, and there's a sheet like this there. Now, this is approximately the crossover from Phase 1A to Phase 1B, as I'm sure the court's concern knows, there's only money for Phase 1A at present, so they're only implementing Phase 1A at present, they have planning permission for both. The join between the two schemes is roughly in the area of where you can see Tree 109 with a purple blob, that's about the dividing line of the two schemes. And your lordships can here see the position of the roost in Seven Eight Close, which is marked with a red star. And in the south, in the area where you can see bus stop locations mentioned, referred to, that whole area there is the treed area of Oakdene Wood, which is one of the favourite places for bats in the area. Whilst the court has that page open, could I also draw attention to the position of Orange Grove on that plan? And if you see where the words trees located at top of cutting slope, immediately above the words top of cutting, I hope the court will see Orange Grove marked. And it is at the westerly point of Orange Grove, i.e. roughly where the O of orange is written, that another bat roost was discovered on a one-night survey in July 2010.
Where's this written down in your...
It's going to be, it's actually at the bottom of page three, we're going to get to it. It was just while the court had opened the plan, I thought it was helpful to identify. It's in italics at the bottom of page three. And there's an error there. It should be 2010, I do apologise. Note, there has now, in one night surveying in July 2010, been discovered a second roost. Now, I make it absolutely plain, members had no knowledge of that second roost. When it comes to the questions of discretion, we'll say that it's relevant. I was for the time being simply trying to show you where it was, it's not very far from the other roost.
The bat commuting corridor which goes in a southwesterly direction from the first roost, that's observed at the move, is it?
Yes, it is, and that is dealt with in the UBS. I mean, the bats have got, first of all, you've got bats which are flying up and down the whole of the linear corridor, and then there is a specific route which was observed in the UBS between Oakdene Wood and this particular bat roost, and was confirmed in July 2010 when they went back to look.
And there's no specific corridor for the Orange Grove?
Well, the answer is that, again, it was said they were going to Oakdene Wood, but it hasn't been plotted with a nice thing.
But it wouldn't be across the route 1A?
It wouldn't be across 1A, it would be across 1B.
And what is the green line described as bat tracking, is it? That's bats or buses or...?
The green line is where someone has walked along with his machine which picks up the shrieks of the bats. You go along a transect line, and they pointed out that they couldn't go everywhere because it was so treed and wooded, but there were various lines they drew, so they never inspected everywhere, they simply did spot checks along certain bat transect lines. Coming back to the note I put in, the overall conclusions of the two reports showed impacts under four heads. And I just have identified here in this note, the first note, the first head is loss of habitat. The second is loss of connectivity, that's on page two in bold type. The third, and it was the report's own phrase, mortality to bats caused by traffic collision. And four, interference with the route for bats between the roost at Seven Eight Close and Oakdene Wood. And I set out for the court the various passages from the reports. And I've also in each case dealt first of all with what was in the detailed environmental appraisal. This isn't a formal European environmental statement, but it was an environmental report. I set out in each case the passages in the DEA and the passage in the updated bat survey under the four heads. And can I just at this stage draw your lordship's attention to, under loss of habitat, to the first reference under loss of habitat, that the site was likely to be a key area for bats in the locality? So this is not just a claimant trying to say, well, bats are important here, that was the report of the consultants.
Where's the reference to key?
Key area is, my lord, at page one.
I see, yes, yes, I got it.
Under loss of habitat, in the first quotation. And in the second quotation, you see a specific finding that the loss of woodland and scrub vegetation would result in a reduction in the abundance of invertebrates and a decrease in the foraging habitat. This would reduce the carrying capacity for bats, and any bats in the area would have to travel further. And then the top of page three to a loss of good quality bat foraging habitat. Now, I'm not going to work through all those passages, but they are there for the court to consider. And I just want to make as a result of that, let's just ask you that.
In a representative picture, would someone have to take his protective freedom to Oakdene Wood? Because for all we know, Oakdene Wood is enormously used by bats, and maybe the loss of this corridor, if I just seem to focus on the area of that Oakdene Wood, is going to reduce the habitat by 25 to 10%?
Lords, we would entirely agree. In fairness, there was some extra work done, which isn't in the two reports, because Mr. Cameron referred to it, I recall, before Judge Bidder, but their concentration has been on whether there are trees on the site which have got bat roosts, and that's one of the matters which we regret. I can't say to what extent they've done anymore. What is very noticeable is that on their documents, they haven't actually marked the particular trees, because of course they're not felling there, and so they say, well, they'll be there in the future. What we say is, that's the whole, well, that's part of the trouble. Lord, I just want to make four submissions under this first topic. First of all, that the materials which I've put in, which come from the developer's own documents, show that there'll be a range of material and appreciable impacts on bats. And it's irrelevant so far as the habitats directive, whether those impacts were or were not significant. Significance is not the relevant test, and we're all agreed about that. In fact, the surveys found what was a significant impact for the first nine years, that's between the start of the works, which would take approximately two years, and a further seven years while replanting and mitigation measures took effect. And the reports, both reports accepted that there would be what was termed a moderate adverse impact on the bats during that period. Now, in EIA jargon, a moderate adverse impact is a significant impact, particularly when it's a moderate adverse impact on a sensitive subject as bats are. And you will have seen in the case, we refer to the technical literature which deals with that matter. But it doesn't matter, even if there hadn't been the significant impacts, the whole of the impacts are plainly highly material impacts, and that shouldn't be in any form of dispute. Point two, and it's a development of the same point, is to say that there is a straight clash between those I represent and Mr. Cameron's team. Because Mr. Cameron argues, and it's paragraph 130.5 of the respondent's case, that there is only a slight impact and it does not amount to any appreciable indirect disturbance. We say that that is wholly to ignore the nine years when there's going to be a significant impact, together with the nature of the other impacts, which even if they're not significant, are plainly material and appreciable impacts and not trivial or de minimis impacts. Third point, although Mr. Cameron in the respondent's case 130.3.4, 130.3.4, although he suggests that the loss of habitat only affects Miatus species, of which relatively few were found on the survey, that is not what the bat survey found. And if I could ask the court please to turn to the Appendix Part Two at Tab Ten and page 234. So this is Appendix Part Two, page 234.
Wait a minute, that's not Tab Ten, that's not in my...
Appendix Part Two, oh, it's my mistake, Tab Nine, my mistake, I apologise. Tab Nine, page 234. And it's the first new paragraph on 234 under the heading Loss of Foraging Habitat on which Mr. Cameron relies.
Is it the UBS?
In the UBS, page 234, the paragraph beginning the loss of foraging habitat, the first new paragraph on page 234. The loss of foraging habitat will have an adverse impact on local bats. The impact on the pipistrelle species and the ceratine will be less significant as these bats are adapted to foraging in the urban environment compared to the impact on Miatus species, which prefer more natural habitats. Without mitigation, that means in the nine years until the mitigation... Without mitigation, that means in the nine years until the mitigation is established, the loss of foraging habitat is anticipated of a short term, moderate adverse impact at a local level. Once the landscape planting has been established, likely to be at least seven years, the majority of foraging habitat would be replaced, resulting in a long term, slight adverse to neutral impact. Now, looking at that, what it's in fact is, I think conceding that there'll actually be a significant impact on the myotis bat. But the point being made is the impact on the other bats will be less significant. That doesn't mean that it's a de minimis matter. Nowhere is that said in the report. Fourth matter to mention in relation to impact is that we accept that already, and largely since the beginning of September this year, 2010, after the appellate committee declined to grant a stay on the work pending this appeal, much of the vegetation in the Phase 1A corridor has been removed. There's been fairly massive work since September and October this year. Couldn't start till September because there's a condition on the planning permission that you mustn't affect trees and shrubs and so forth during the bird breeding season. So you can't do it till September. In September and October, the bulldozers have frankly been in. But of course, so far as the mortality risk, which is referred to, that can't arise until you start having buses going up and down the road in the operational phase. And similarly, the main disruption of the flight path to the off-site bat roosts can't occur until one's got traffic. And of course, there's been no start on Phase 1B. So you've got approximately 1.3 kilometres of wooded railway embankment, upon which development could start at any time. It can't start until there's money, but no further consents or planning consents are needed. There's planning permission for that. And my understanding is that as soon as they can get the money, they would want to do it. And they would want to do it because the benefits they rely on chiefly come from having Phase 1A and B together. You're really going to link Faram and Gosport. It's a somewhat crackpot scheme, which comes about through cost restrictions, which in a means at present, you're going to go down part of the way and then back to the ordinary highway. But there's still Phase 1B all to play for, as it were, so far as the bats as well.
So you're asking us to confine this ultimately to 1A with all the advantage to the bats and disadvantage to the public that involves?
I saw, my lord, what I am simply accepting, I hope realistically, is that much of the bat interest in Phase 1A has gone. We say unlawfully, but saying that we've got a very real reason for still being here because there are still an awful lot of bats left and bat habitat left. And indeed, the bats in Oakdean Wood, who also fly over Phase 1A, are going to be a lot better off if there isn't a busway than if there is one. But I simply felt that I ought to make the position clear at the outset.
I understand page 2A, because if you focus on Phase 1A, how does whoever does this get the information? The error is where he hasn't had a backtracking transit?
Well, he has, he's been, this I may say, this is the council's own experts reporting. He, this is from the UBS. He has actually been to Seven Eight Close. And standing at Seven Eight Close, he's observed bats leaving it, leaving it in the evening and the direction they're going in.
I see that. What interests me is, you're talking about Phase 1B, which is a bit to the right here. And there are virtually no bat entries off the end of Phase 1A.
That is because they have, when you say no bat entries, this report, this plan came from a report which was purely prepared for the injunction proceedings in July of this year. When, and it was in the context there of looking at Phase 1A. It wasn't prepared, this particular plan, in the context of Phase 1B.
So you asked us to infer that Phase 1B is problematic to Phase 1A?
Yes, well, there's no, if we look at the UBS, it deals with it, it all sets it out. I don't think there's any dispute on that. Indeed, it may well be more important because there haven't been any trains there since 1970. So it's 20 more, 20 years more for the foliage to grow. But I don't think it's a matter in any form of dispute that there are bats the whole way down the corridor and some trees either side.
The point is, it's in the report, but not in the plan because the plan was introduced.
As I say, the UBS itself covers the entirety, albeit obviously because they were.
It's my fault, 202A. You told us that the division between 1A and 1B comes at, what did you say, 104?
Well, can I, I think the easiest for that is to take your lordship, if I ask your lordship to go in appendix, in appendix part two, this time to tab 10, which I wrongly took because it was last time. And if your lordships would go in that to page 295, from the start there, 287 to 295, you are being taken through Phase 1A. And your lordship will see that Phase 1A ends just north of the Oakdean Wood, site of interest for nature conservation. Your lordship may like to note that it's not just any old wood. It's a site of interest for nature conservation, the sink. And what happens is that so far as Phase 1A is concerned, the busway goes over Tichborne Way, over the road there. And then it branches off and turns left and descends down an embankment to the east of the way and goes back onto Tichborne Way and proceeds off the top of this plan to join onto the main road down into Gosport.
Well, I simply not find which is north, which is south?
Lord, that, north, north is, the busway is going north. Broadly speaking, the busway is going north. So north is to the left of the plan.
I'm trying to relate this to page 202A. I'm failing to do so.
I think, my lords, that is.
I mean, can we just get the overview first?
I mean, in 202A, your lordship, you can see in 202A, here, a line which is an old railway line.
So that's not 202A?
At, I'm sorry, at 295, I apologise. I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the wrong page. Let's, I'm sorry, my lord. If your lordship will look at 202A, your lordship can see just on top of the figures of trees 104 and 105, some old railway lines lying between them and the red star. Does your lordship see that?
Well, I suppose.
Now, lord, that is a bit of an old railway line. And I draw your lordship's attention to that because I hope that that may assist your lordship with the plan which I was taking your lordship to, which was page 295 in the appendix part two. That is the same railway line can be seen there. And so far as 202A, Tichborne Way is the main road which your lordship can see coming down. If I hold up my plan here, this road coming down, coming down there, that is Tichborne Way and it, that is the existing road. And the busway goes across on top of it.
As we saw last time, the bat corridor actually doesn't cross anything except the dead end, which is off the right end of Phase 1A.
That's right, they need that for some turning movements. They explained to, your lordship may remember, I think you asked that very same question. And they explained they needed that for some turning movements. As soon as they've got Phase 1B, you won't need to come off at that point. The buses will be able to carry on south down to Gosport.
There'll be a stop there, won't there?
There are a whole series of stops, yes. And they'll carry on.
Yeah. So one, I've now, 1A is to the north or the south of 1B?
1A is to the north. 1A comes down from Faram in the north and ends at Oakdean Wood. And therefore, on plan 295, which we've been looking at, that shows the southern end of Phase 1A. That's the bit which they are building at present.
So back to 202A, everything to the right of 104 is 1B and not yet done, is that it?
Yes, it's got a planning permission. It's got a planning permission, but not yet started. And of course, the early bit of Phase 1B is the bit which is absolutely critical because it's so close to the two bat roosts. One's no idea what other bat roosts off-site may be found elsewhere just off Phase 1B. Because the second bat roost at Orange Grove was merely because the appellate consultant went along in July. It was only funding for one night's work. And he went to look at Seven Eight Close and its area. And he straight away spotted another. There may be all sorts of other bat roosts on Phase 1B off it. We just don't know. But that is the position as it is. And if your lordships have page 295 in the appendix part two, your lordships will see that the following pages aren't in the same glorious technicolor because they are simply the working drawings because the county council doesn't have drawings to the same detail for Phase 1B as it has for Phase 1A. Lords, that's all I want to say on topic one. Turning to my topic two, which is the habitats directive. Could I ask your lordships to go, and my lady, to go straight please to appendix one, tab 12, which is probably the document you'll be referring to most in the hearing. Appendix one, tab 12. As usual with these directives, there are a vast number of recitals which unfortunately are not numbered. But can I draw your attention, please, to recital five, which reads, whereas the preservation, protection and improvement and so forth are an essential objective of general interest pursued by the community as stated in Article 130R of the treaty?
You don't mean appendix one, you mean authorities volume?
My lady, I apologise. In authorities bundle, tab 12. Authorities bundle one, AB1, tab 12.
Which recital?
I'm looking at the fifth one, my lord, which is whereas the preservation, the fifth recital, and that.
Well, I'm.
The first is having regard to the treaty, the second having regard to the proposal, the third, fourth, third having regard to the opinion, the fourth having regard to the opinion, then whereas the preservation. That one, you see the reference there to Article 130R. It's Article 130R, which has now become Article 191, which I took the justices to a little earlier in AB1, authorities bundle one, tab 10.
That's the Lisbon treaty.
That's the Lisbon treaty. Now, just draw attention to that. Then if I could take your lordship to the seventh recital, which is whereas the main aim of this directive being to promote the maintenance of biodiversity. So one sees there what the main aim is. And then recital eight refers to whereas in the European territory of member states, natural habitats are continuing to deteriorate and an increasing number of wild species are threatened and it's necessary to take action. And then over the page, please, to what is the fifteenth recital, which begins, whereas a general system of protection is required. That is the fifteenth recital. Whereas a general system of protection is required for certain species of flora and fauna to complement Directive 79409. 79409 is the birds directive. And that does much the same for birds as the habitats directive does for other animals and flora. Whereas provision should be made for management measures for certain species, including the prohibition of certain means of capturing or killing while providing for the possibility of derogations on certain conditions. Then if I could ask the justices to go to the right hand side of that page and to little g, and we're still in, we're now in Article one, which is the definition section. And if you go to little g, under little g, you will see that there's a category, little roman one to little roman four. And such species are listed or may be listed in annex two or annex four or five. And then H says that priority species means species referred to in little g1. And so far as the bats with which we're concerned, we fall within, we're not within category one. We're within categories two, three or four. It doesn't specifically say which we are, but we don't get an asterisk. And that means that we are not one of the extra special priority species, which are the ones which are on the verge of extinction. So we're either vulnerable or rare or endemic and requiring particular attention. And then if I could ask the court to go to Article two, you've got the aim clearly set out. And I won't bother to read it, except draw your lordship's attention particularly to Article two, two, measures to maintain at favourable conservation status, natural habitats. One then comes to a complete section of the directive, which runs from Article three through until Article 11. Can I just draw your attention to the fact that's got a particular heading, conservation of natural habitats and habitats of species? And that is a complete section because we're then going to come on to the section with which we're primarily concerned, which starts at Article 12. And it's called protection of species and which runs from Article 12 to 16. Now, most of what is in Articles three to 11 is irrelevant for this court's purpose because it is concerned with establishing certain geographical areas of special habitats and/or species, which are known as special areas of conservation. This section is concerned with all member states designating certain areas as special areas of conservation. Those then form part of what's referred to in Article three, two, the Natura 2000 network. The Natura 2000 network, because 2000 was the aim to have it in place by then, was to consist of SACs, special areas of conservation, designated under the habitats directive, and SPAs, special protection areas, which are designated under the birds directive. You have these two areas, they're geographical areas, and they are designated either under the birds directive or under the habitats directive. And once you have any form of development within a special area of conservation or a special protection area, then you have to go through the requirements of Article six, which is applied to birds by Article seven. And I assure your lordships have heard of appropriate assessment. That's a technical term that in certain circumstances you need appropriate assessment, which is another form of analysis and review. And that is referred to in Article six, three. Now, our site itself. Now, our site itself, the planning application site, is not a special area of conservation. That's why we're not immediately concerned with it. But very close to our site, there is a SPA, indeed there are several SPAs, and therefore, one of the matters that the local authority had to consider was whether appropriate assessment was needed. As it transpired, it wasn't needed and that matter is not before the Court. Now, there are just three provisions in these sections which I want to refer the Court to. The first is Article 6.2, that member states shall take appropriate steps to avoid in the special areas of conservation disturbance insofar as such disturbance could be significant in relation to the objectives of this directive. I refer it to the Court because it does have a specific reference to significance in relation to the objectives of the directive. And similarly, in Article 6.3, in the second line, any plan or project likely to have a significant effect thereon. This is because the draftsman of the habitats directive, when he wanted to be referring to significant impacts, he spelt it out, of which Article 6.2 and 3 are good examples. Then just before we leave these provisions, could I just ask your Lordship to look at Article 3.3? Where they consider it necessary, member states shall endeavour to improve the ecological coherence of their Natura 2000 by maintaining where appropriate developing features of the landscape which are of major importance for wild fauna and flora, as referred to in Article 10. And if your Lordships will go to Article 10, you will see that the features which are referred to in the second paragraph of Article 10 are those which by virtue of their linear and continuous structure or their function as stepping stones are essential for the migration, dispersal and genetic exchange of wild species. And of course, a 4.7 metre treed and shrub railway embankment is precisely, sorry, 4.7 kilometre stretch or former railway embankment is precisely the sort of linear feature to which member states, and that will include local planning authorities, are directed to pay special heed. Could we then please turn to the important provisions which are Article 12 to Article 16? And I'm not concerned with 13, 14 or 15, just 12 and 16. The others, one of them provides for flora and another for various hunting and so forth, which we're not concerned with. Article 12 is of course the critical provision. Article 12.1 establishes a system of strict protection of the animals listed in Annex 4. And if your Lordships can find Annex 4, and unfortunately it's not paginated and it's quite tricky to find the places, but eventually, and it's about 10 pages from the end of Tab 12, you'll come to a heading halfway down the right-hand page, Annex 4. And in Annex 4, when it's been traced, I'll say it's about 10 pages back and two-thirds of the way down the page, in capital letters it says Annex 4. We are, if you go down to the penultimate entry, Microcoroptera all species, that's bats, that's where we come in. So Article 12 applies, requires the strict protection for all animal species in Annex 4A. Then with a set out, A, all forms of deliberate capture or killing of specimens in the wild, deliberate disturbance, particularly during the period. And I'm going to come back and look at Article 12.1B in a little detail in a moment. Then balancing Article 12, one's got Article 16. Because Article 16 provides that even where you're in breach of Article 12, in certain circumstances, there can be derogations. And as will be a very familiar ground to this House, derogations have to be construed narrowly. So it's always, you've got to fall precisely into one of the derogation categories before it will assist you. And looking at Article 16.1, the first thing to note is that there's first of all got to be no satisfactory alternative. You can't have a derogation unless it's satisfied that there's no satisfactory alternative. And of course, the local authority in this case never remotely contemplated the question of alternatives. Secondly, you can't have a derogation if the activity under Article 12 would be detrimental to the maintenance of the populations of the species at a favourable conservation status. And it's that which with respect is one of the real difficulties for Lord Justice Ward's interpretation in the Court below of what disturbance is. Because he said that to be disturbance, you've got to be detrimental to the maintenance of the populations. Whereas quite plainly, Article 16 is providing that there will be cases where you've got disturbance and the other matters, but it won't be detrimental to the maintenance of the population and so read on. And then one has got listed a number of grounds where you can have an exception. A plainly isn't at all relevant here. B isn't relevant here, but it could be relevant, for instance, if bats were damaging a church by its droppings. Then for instance, you could apply for a derogation under Article 16.1B in order to protect the church as a type of property. C is public health and public safety, neither of which arise here, or for other imperative reasons of overriding public interest, including those of a socially current nature and beneficial consequences of primary importance to the environment. If I'm right that there is disturbance under Article 12, then in due course, the appropriate authority may have to consider whether or not, in this case, there are imperative reasons of overriding public interest. There are certainly interests of public interest. A decision has still got to be made as to whether they're imperative, in particular whether Phase 1A on its own is imperative and whether they're overriding and whether the overall scheme would bring beneficial consequences of primary importance to the environment. I think must be a matter about which there could be disagreement. But that's a separate test to bring beneficial consequences of primary importance to the environment. And in the authorities, there's a reference to the Court of Appeals decision in Newsom, which deals with that and says that that is a separate test. You've got to have both our ropey, which is imperative reasons, and beneficial consequences of primary importance to the environment.
Sorry, how does that work? How do you get that? Doesn't look accurate on the language.
No, Lords, the view, what it's like to look at the case on it accepts that the language is not very satisfactory or clear, but it's in our Volume 2 at Tab 29. A decision under the old regulations, not the new ones. And it's in Paragraph 19 in the judgment of Lord Justice Waller. Page 113, Paragraph 19. He's dealing with the test of imperative reasons. First, I don't find the language all that easy, but it seems that the respondents accept, and I think rightly.
Paragraph 19.
Paragraph 19.
The question accordingly.
On Page 113.
The question accordingly. Yes.
And he sets it out, he sets out the question. Then first, I don't find the language all that easy, but it seems the respondents accept, and I think rightly, that we're concerned to identify an imperative reason that is both an overriding public interest and with beneficial consequences for the environment.
Well, that, I mean, that may be so under that wording because for some reason, the intermediate wording, including those of a social and economic nature, was not relevant or was not mentioned. And secondly, what weight does that give to the word including?
Was that an identical provision or whereas?
Yes, my Lords, that was an identical provision in the habitats regulations in their initial form, in the 1994 version of the habitats regulations, which one finds in our Authorities Bundle 3, Tab 38. And those words to which Lord Mance refers were there too. It's, if a Lordship have that, it's Tab 38 in Regulation 44 of the original 1994 regulations. It's Regulation 44.2E, which I think is exactly the same, it's using the same words.
In Tab 38 of the Authorities.
In Authorities Bundle, Tab 38.
No, it's E, yes, I see.
44.2E, which is using the words of the habitats directive and so those missing words are left out.
Well, I mean frankly, it's different wording, it's based on.
Is it different wording? I'm sorry.
It's based on the directive and one would need to look at other languages as well to see, understand this, but it doesn't on the face of it mean what Lord Justice Waller said.
Lord, I think what it is, is that the public interest are including those of a social or economic nature. I think Lord Justice Waller is assuming that there's a comma, as it were, after those of an economic nature. And then as a separate matter, beneficial consequences of primary importance to the.
Well, that's very bizarre.
But I'm not going to take, nothing is going to turn in this case, I think, on that particular matter, whether the Court of Appeals were right or wrong on that particular matter. Then if we could come back to Appendix 12 itself, the key thing to note is the strict protection. Item 1, the narrow escape for derogations. And both the cases of Finland, which is in our Authorities Bundle at Tab 3.1, Tab 3, and Commission for the UK, say you've got to construe the derogations narrowly. And one could put it this way and say that human desires, needs and pastimes are put firmly into second place. And they will only prevail in the rather extreme circumstances in Article 16, where there is some form of imperative overriding need. Coming back to Article 12.1A. That is only, we're not really concerned with it, except that it's got the same word deliberate in as we find in Article 12.1B. And there's European learning on this from the European Court and everyone agrees that means taking an action, knowing that it may have a particular consequence. So that's what, it's a bit like English recklessness. On A, a matter which troubled Lord Justice Ward is what if a motorist knows that he's driving through an area where there are a lot of bats and he drives and kills the bat? Does he commit an offence under the criminal provisions by which a breach of Article 12.1B has been made a summary offence in English law? Simple answer is yes. If he does know, he would, but in many cases, he no doubt would be able to show he didn't know. And in any event, presumably, it's unlikely he'd ever be prosecuted. And if he was prosecuted, if he was driving slowly, then presumably he'd get an absolute discharge. But the answer is to that is that he would, within the meaning of deliberately, have killed a bat of which he was aware. And if you up the stakes and move from bats to some rather more cuddly creature and assume that we had here, let us say bears, as in Italy and Spain or something like that and so forth, and notices up saying, you know, watch out for the bears, we would expect people to drive very carefully when they were going through that sort of area. And there is protection for all these species. Now, so far as B, could I ask your Lordships please to open our supplementary case at the section Paragraph 3, where we deal with the amount of common ground? So it's in the supplementary case at Paragraph 3. And I just want to work through matters under the headings A to K that are there set out, because I think that will be the quickest way. First of all, there's agreement as to the meaning of deliberate. Acting in a certain way, knowing that he or she may disturb a protected species. The two cases are Greece and Spain, which you've got Greece in Authorities Bundle 1, Tab 4, and I handed in the replacement clean copy this morning. And Authorities Bundle 1.5, which is Spain.
Sorry, where, your printed case, Paragraph 3A.
No, not a printed, I'm sorry, my lord.
Supplementary case.
In our supplementary.
No, I got your supplementary case. Common ground, Paragraph 3, Page 3.
Yeah, 3A.
A.
Now, A was the respondent agrees with the appellant's view as the meaning of deliberate.
Yes.
And there's a reference AC to our own original case, Paragraph 9. And that's where we referred to the cases of Greece and of Spain. And to say that's not in dispute, that that is the test. And on the facts of the present case, plainly, the contractors who are at work at present and those employing them know of the presence of bats. And they know that the bats are likely to be impacted on by their works. Then Little B. The respondent now agrees that the appellant's view is the inference which can be drawn from the use of the word particularly in Article 12.1B. And they acknowledge what's said by the Commission on that matter. Now, that goes to this very slightly odd phrase in 12.1B, particularly during the period of breeding, rearing, hibernation and migration. Note that that does not say exclusively during those periods. It's simply those are the periods you particularly look at. And one would presume that the criminal sanctions, you get a bigger fine for disturbing during the period of breeding, rearing, hibernation and migration than at other times. Because when you look on to Article 12.3, you'll see that the prohibition in Paragraph 1B applies to all stages of life of the animal. So it's 12.1B, those words particularly aren't words of limitation. Then coming to item Little C, the respondent agrees with the appellant that disturbance can be indirect. So you don't actually need to make physical contact with the species. Of course, the classic example of that is Greece. Some of the Court may have been lucky enough to go to the Corinthos and seen the various beaches there where the turtles come in from the sea and they make a hole and they lay their eggs. What was the trouble was noise from the tourists and people taking their pedolos out into the sea. And it was indirect disturbance of the turtles which were similarly protected. So no doubt disturbance can be indirect. Then so far as D, the respondent has clarified his acceptance that there's no need for the disturbance to be significant. And that's an important matter. So in European law, significant usually means substantial or major. And there's acceptance that you can offend Article 12.1B even though your disturbance is not significant. And I've already drawn the Court's attention to places. And I've already drawn the court's attention to places where the drafters of the directive intended to refer to significance, and we've looked at Articles six, two and four, and there's another example in Article twelve four. Just take your lordship's attention to that. Member state shall establish a system to monitor the incidental capture and killing of animal species. Incidental means accidental, and you can get there from the French and the Italian versions, which we've included in the bundle. Incidental means accidental capture and killing of the animal species. In the light of the information, member states should take further research to ensure that incidental capture and killing doesn't have a significant negative effect. So there's a case where they intended to refer to significant negative effect, and it has been spelt out. Going back to E, the respondent now concedes that there's no need to show that the action must affect important life cycle processes, so that the DEFRA answer to question four, which said you did have to affect it, was wrong. Now, that is now common ground, and it's conceded in paragraph sixty-eight of the respondent's case. You can have disturbance without affecting important life cycle processes. F, the respondent now concedes that the qualification significant in relation to the objectives of the directive in Article six two doesn't apply to our disturbance. G, he now, they now concede that loss of habitat could be capable of constituting indirect disturbance of species if such a loss led to disturbance of the particular species. This accords with what the appellant has always contended, and therefore the difference between the parties, which I identified in paragraph thirty-four of the appellant's case, no longer exists. H, the paragraph one four nine reconfirms it would be not be necessary to establish an effect on the conservation status of the species at population level. This is further confirmation that the approach adopted by the Court of Appeal as to the meaning and application of disturbance was erroneous. We've got common ground there, and there's an implied acceptance that Lord Justice Ward was wrong in his approach to the question of discretion, by considering how natural England would have acted, rather than how the committee would have acted. Well, that, those matters bring us on now to other matters, so I can turn away from, from those matters. Could I just ask the court, please, to go to the one document which, which wasn't, when I say the one, the most important document that was not before the Court of Appeal below, and that is this additional reasoned opinion, and it is in authorities bundle tab forty-four, tab forty-six, fourth authorities bundle, AB four, tab forty-six. This document came to light during the Court of Appeal hearing, came to light it existed because the respondents put in a document which referred to it. It then proved rather difficult to obtain either from the Commission or from DEFRA, but finally, I'm glad to say, in a most courteous way, my request was treated for request under the Environmental Information Regulations, and we have it, and there's a covering letter, the first page of tab forty-six to me, by which the Commission supplied it, and a few days later, actually, DEFRA supplied it also.
It was supplied after the Court of Appeal judgment.
This, this, Court of Appeal knew there'd been an additional reasoned opinion, they didn't know what it had said. It, it actually, it predates the Court of Appeal's judgment, the reasoned opinion. It's simply that we, we haven't, we haven't traced it. In this document, if your lordships will go on about five pages, you get to a page which says additional reasoned opinion. Because the first few pages were supplied to me, but are not relevant. The important bit is the bit which begins additional reasoned opinion. And I don't understand why, there's a left and a right-hand side of the page, which aren't quite the same. One's got written accusa de receps on, but it doesn't matter, and that, that explains that it's the text of the report, and then it appears. And if your lordship will go to paragraph nine, you'll see that the United Kingdom, following the decision in Commission in the UK, had informed the Commission that they'd adopted new regulations which included the Conservation Natural Habitats, et cetera, Amendment Regulations two thousand and seven. That's the sixth line of paragraph nine. Then, paragraph ten, the Commission has assessed the new legislation and has identified certain non-conformities. That's non-conformities with the ECJ's judgment in Commission versus UK. And then going on to paragraph thirty, which is at page ten, paragraph thirty. Now, it starts, the new regulation thirty-nine one B, and your lordships have got in paragraph twenty-nine, set out what was in the new thirty-nine one B, and it was deliberately disturbs wild animals in a way likely significantly to affect the ability of a significant group of animals. So we've got two significants introduced. And in paragraph thirty, what the Commission said, that appears to diverge, adds numerous new requirements restricting the scope of Article twelve one B that are not provided for. And then at paragraphs one 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 and one one two of the judgment, the court found that Article sixteen defines in a precise manner the circumstances, so that Article sixteen must be interpreted restrictively. Articles twelve, thirteen, sixteen form a coherent body of provisions intended to protect. The provision in the directive not to disturb protected species is not limited to significant disturbances of significant groups of animals. Furthermore, the concept of disturbance is not limited merely to the survival and breeding of species in the rearing and nurturing of their young. This is an unwarranted restriction of the wide protection regime foreseen in the directive. And then at paragraph thirty-two, there's a broad statement that disturbance covers all disturbance of protected species. And again, in paragraph thirty-six, that's-
Sorry, paragraph, which one do you just put?
Thirty-two.
Again, first provides more limited.
Thirty-two, and thirty-four, and thirty-six are all making the point that it's all disturbance that's protected, and that led on to the conclusion of the reasoned opinion on page fourteen, in the third paragraph, under hereby delivers the following reasoned opinion, the United Kingdom has failed to fulfil an obligation.
I suppose it's always possible the Commission was wrong, but the United Kingdom altered its law.
Well, my, my lord, let's, if one contemplates that for a moment, it's not so, and I can take your lordship to two passages which show actually that its view was in line with that of, of, of the court. The first is to ask your lordships to go in volume one to the case of Spain, and that is at tab five of bundle one, of authorities bundle one. And this is a very experienced advocate general in environmental matters, advocate general Kokot. And it's, it's, authorities bundle one, tab five, it's a case which was concerned with Article twelve one A, but she makes it plain, the advocate general, that she's dealing with one A and B. We can see that from paragraph forty-six, where she is referring to twelve one A and B together, and of course, they're linked because they've both got this word deliberate in. And when we get to paragraph forty fifty-three, this is the key paragraph, she says, as far as Directive two thousand and four thirty-five is concerned, now that's the Directive on Environmental Liability, and if you're with me in paragraph fifty-three, you need a cross-reference back to paragraph forty-two, because she there sets out the text of Directive two thousand and four thirty-five, and we've copies, if any of your lordships want that Directive. And then coming back to fifty-three, the point she's making in fifty-three is that Article five of the two thousand and four directive is couched in narrower terms, with the necessary subjective elements being further clarified. It's only significant adverse effects on maintaining favourable conservation status that are prevented, whereas the prohibitions in Article twelve one also extend to harm that has less intensive effects, because they only relate to individual specimens. So plainly, in her view, one was not applying the sort of test which Lord Justice Ward applied, at paragraph fifty-three. And I apologize that paragraph fifty-three is not referred to in my case, so I, I draw attention to paragraph fifty-three there in the advocate general's-
Does the court say anything?
No, lord, the court simply concentrated on the question of the meaning of deliberate, and, 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 and doesn't, and in paragraphs seventy to seventy-one, doesn't go back and consider the matter or the contrast which was being drawn with the other directive.
There was another reference.
Well, the other was, was, was a reference to Greece, and your lordships may recall that in my case, I made the point that on the facts in Greece, there was no evidence that the conservation status of the turtles was threatened. Indeed, the Greek government particularly said, we're not in breach because the figures show that the number of turtles is remaining the same. That, 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 that was in the Greek case, and I deal with that matter in paragraph twenty-two of the appellant's case, and I give all the references. And the European Court, in its judgment, accepted as a fact in paragraph thirty-one of Greece, that it doesn't appear that the number of nests of the species had decreased. So they were saying it doesn't matter that there's no evidence that the conservation status of the species is affected, you've got a protected species and you must not disturb it. And of course, Greece was a case under twelve one B and D, they were dealt with together. So, my lord, I think, I think the answer, therefore, to Lord Lord Mans's question is that what the Commission was there saying is completely in line with advocate general Kokot and with the actual reasoning of the ECJ's judgment in Greece. When one, when one looks at the facts. Now, my lord, on this matter, so far as the judgment of Lord Justice Ward, it is quite plain in a whole number of places that his view was that there had to be deterioration to the long-term conservation status of the species, and we find this in various places spelt out in my case, but they are particularly in paragraph thirty-seven and thirty-eight and thirty-nine of Lord Justice Ward's judgment. And then again, in paragraphs seventy-four and in forty-five. So we've got thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-five, seventy-four, a whole number of places. And with great respect to Lord Justice Ward, he was wrong, and it is very unfortunate that he reached this view. It was not argued for by Mr Cameron, it was not argued before by me, and it was never suggested to either of us during the course of the hearing or in any exchange after the hearing that that might be the relevant test. Therefore, neither of us had the opportunity to draw attention to relevant matter, because I say, it was common ground between us that you did not have to be affecting the conservation status of the animals. What we say is that the test is a very simple one. Is there a certain negative impact likely to be detrimental to the species? Very simple test. If the impact is de minimis or trivial, well, then it's not enough. But if it's anything more than that, then it qualifies for protection. And the protection is not going to be decisive, because Article sixteen provides derogations in certain circumstances. And as I understand it, I'm very close to Mr Cameron on this, except that he says, A, that the impacts here are trivial, which I say is simply impossible on the basis of the two reports, and secondly, he says that you've got to add into the test the words, having regard to the effect of the disturbance on the conservation status of the species, having regard to the effect of the disturbance on the conservation status of species, and you find that spelt out in the respondent's case at paragraphs eighty-four and one hundred and one. Well, we deal with that matter in our supplementary case at paragraph twelve, and we say that the test we've put forward is the correct one. We haven't altered one jot from the very beginning. We have always been arguing for a test of something which has got to be a certain negative effect, more than de minimis, albeit not having to be significant. We've never varied. The only nuance we've added is to draw the court's attention to those cases on the meaning of appreciable in other provisions of the European Treaty, but I don't get to take time over those, those are set out in our case. So, my lord...
All right, what do you say appreciable means?
My lord, appreciable means not de minimis.
And what does de minimis mean?
The law won't concern about itself with very little things, very little. But the familiar concept of the law, where things are de minimis or trivial, it's unlikely that we are protection. And of course, you can imagine small developments where the effect on the species might be trivial. It's because you've got here a development over a four-point-seven metre kilometre that, you know, one's into a special area. Lord, I don't tend to say-
I mean, if on the facts, we don't, the bats affected by this particular project were going to represent one percent of the bats within a mile radius, then yes or no, de minimis?
No, my lord, I don't think, I don't think it's not a question of numbers, because as-
Numbers irrelevant?
As, as advocate general Kokot said in that passage to which I took your lordships in Spain, one's concerned with protecting individual members of the species. It can't be a question that you can knock off one percent here, one percent there, one percent there. The, the question is, if you, the, the, that, that is not the approach. All these species are afforded strict protection with a get-out in Article sixteen. In any event, no, there'd be no evidence put forward that as to the percentage, all we know, and it's very much in my favour, that this corridor is a key area that your lordship has in their own report.
No, but we're interested in the definition overall, and we've got to ignore that that's the case in deciding on what overall definition to give it. I mean, are you saying it is completely irrelevant how prolific the species is generally and within the immediate area?
Yes, my lord, I say-
Irrelevant.
I, I say that that is completely irrelevant. Of course, if in fact it is incredibly rare, then it follows automatically that the, you know, you won't have any problem with finding disturbance, but that's at one extreme. But I do say, I do say that. The whole point is, one's decided that a particular species is to be given strict protection. And it's not a question of saying, oh, well, you know, there, 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 there are a hundred bears, so it doesn't matter, you can disturb or kill one, and kill one bear, it'll only be one percent of the bears. That's completely the wrong approach. It may be strange that the Europeans have decided on this approach. I don't think it's strange at all. It seems to be it's a very sensible approach, but it depends upon how you view these, these, these form of matters. But yes, that there is strict protection, because they're all vulnerable, and every species is vulnerable, as is their habitat. And if you've got the, a connection between the species and its habitat, it becomes very important, and the aim of the habitat directive to protect them, adopting a precautionary approach. And I remind your lordships of that, that is the basic approach, and that is, of course, all set out in the treaty and in the famous case of Waddamsey, which I'm sure your lordships- the famous case of Waddamse, which I'm sure your Lordships are very familiar with, which is in Appendix one at tab eight, which is the test which sets out that very strict test that you're concerned about risks. And if you start hotting off one here, one there, you haven't got a strict system of protection.
Are you going to be showing us the DEFRA letter or not?
Lord, I'm very happy for your Lordships to look at the DEFRA letter. The DEFRA letter comes because Mr Cameron's clients wrote to DEFRA, and therefore there is a DEFRA answer, and it's at tab fifty-six. Isn't it? Oh, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. I, as I say, we were simply asked by Mr Cameron if this letter, which was sent to his solicitors, could go in. We, it didn't, it wasn't, it hadn't been sent to us, so I assumed-
Well, we've been shown various recent exchanges with regard to the letter between Mr Cheery Jones and Mr Greenberg.
Yeah.
But I mean-
Lord, I don't mind if, Lord, it just seems to be rather odd that DEFRA can write in to the Court and put in their views. Seems to be there's a procedure, if they want to intervene. We thought it seemed rather strange that they should be, that the registrar, they should be writing to the Court and the registrar telling us that'll be put before the Court. What we said was if either party wanted to go before the Court, we thought that that was the appropriate approach. But if your Lordships have got it, anyhow, it's no water under the bridge.
I really don't think that the precise words of a letter written from the registrar's office without consultation with any of the justices should detain us for one moment, Mr George.
Well, Lord, what I was concerned about, the DEFRA letter, was the one which is in, which is the one which is in tab fifty-six, because there are two DEFRA letters. There's their first DEFRA letter of the thirtieth of September, and then there's a further clarificatory letter which doesn't really take the matter very much further. And I thought that the first, well, the first one was certainly sent to Hampshire. I don't know how it came that DEFRA were writing to Hampshire, but I thought it said, if you can find the latest letter, the latest letter. I thought it said they'd received an approach, but it doesn't matter. Anyhow, the same point arises as to whether it's, how relevant it is to have the view of their head of protection. He doesn't claim to be a lawyer, but no doubt he is their head of protected species, and he expresses a view there. On many of the matters there, we don't take issue. For instance, we readily agree with the second and third bullet points there. There's no dispute there. We readily agree with indirect disturbance. What we're not entirely happy with is certain of the bullet points, but I'm not-
Well, so I just indicate which ones you disagree with.
They're dealt with all in our supplementary case, but so far as, so far as the bottom, so far as the penultimate one on the first page, consideration to be given to the rarity in conservation, we don't say that that, we say that it's not essential to do that. The test doesn't require you to look at that, and we-
Well, so is it wrong to give consideration?
No, we don't say it's wrong to give consideration, but it won't give you the answer to the question you're seeking, which is, is there disturbance under Article twelve-one B? Consideration to the rarity and conservation status won't assist you in that matter. That's why I made it, I-
But you say it's an irrelevant consideration.
No, again, we made the point, I hope perfectly clearly, in our supplementary case, that what we say is that that matter is not the relevant consideration. We don't say that it makes it unlawful if you take it into account. It's not irrelevant in that sense. So by all means, you can ask that question, but it won't give you the answer to your question. And the relevant question is whether there's going to be a certain negative impact which is appreciable and not de minimis. And we believe that that is the view also of the European Commission in the document which is referred to many times in our case, and that, of course, is the document which is in AB four, tab forty-four, which is where that particular phrase came. And then still staying with Lord Brown, so far as the last two bullet points, we don't follow the logic there. We don't think that forty-one, two, it's going to make it less likely to be disturbance, and we don't agree with the last bullet point there. So, so, my Lords, there are-
What about the last one on the-
For the purpose of assessing whether disturbance is likely to affect impacts on the local population and placed within the wider biogeographical context. That's not necessary to do that. You're straight away trying to qualify the matter, and in effect, you're reintroducing significance by the back door. Once you've got rid of a test of significance, you mustn't bring it back in in that way. Lord Mans, the European Commission guidance is tab forty-four of bundle four, and the key passage is at paragraph, page thirty-seven of that document. So it's AB four, tab forty-four is the European Commission's guidance, February two thousand and seven, page thirty-seven, paragraph thirty-eight. Can I give you the Court a health warning? There are several paragraph thirty-eight in this report. So it's page, it's the one which is at page thirty-seven under the heading of disturbance. The disturbance under Article twelve must be deliberate and not accidental. Disturbance, on the other hand, while disturbance under Article six-two must be significant, this isn't the case under Article twelve-one, where the legislator didn't expressly add this qualification. It's not exclusive, some room for maneuver in terms of what would describe disturbance. It also see bats dealing with the trivial point. It would also seem logical that for disturbance of protected species to occur, a certain negative impact likely to be detrimental must be involved. So, Lord, and Lord Brown, that's where we get our test from. Then over the page to paragraph thirty-nine, you have the two extremes. First of all, you've got the case in the first sentence where you are going to affect the species at population level. That's plainly disturbance.
This is the ends of the spectrum, which is how obvious this is to be unhelpful.
Yes. And then, Lord, at the other end of the spectrum in thirty-nine, there's the case of the person who scares a wolf away from entering a sheep enclosure, and that's the trivial one. So you've got the spectrum there. Now, where plainly, somewhere way above that trivial matter, they were not claimed to fall into the category of where there's an effect on the species, and law, and one can see that from the additional reasoned opinion of the Commission, they're not suggesting that an effect on the, the status of the species is a necessary ingredient, and they particularly didn't like that reference to groups of bats and that sort of matter.
Could I take you back to tab fifty-six, please? And the penultimate bullet point on the second page?
Which document am I in, my Lord? Sorry.
Tab fifty-six, the DEFRA letter.
The DEFRA letter, yes. Yes, my Lord.
The penultimate bullet point on the second page, you say that is not the relevant consideration, but it's permissible to have regard to it. Is that right?
Yes, but it certainly wouldn't make the decision unlawful if you took that matter into account, but it won't actually answer the question. Because your Lordship hasn't yet looked at, your Lordship hasn't looked at Regulation forty-one, two.
Just wait for the question. If it is permissible to take it into account, how will the assessment of the issues and factors raised in that question, how can that affect the decision to be taken?
Lord, it can't affect it. It won't answer, it won't answer the question. But I think we ought to look at Regulation forty-one, two.
Well, just before we look at Regulation forty-one, two, if it can't answer the question, how can you say that it's relevant?
Well, Lords, as I, I minded to say it's simply not relevant, but as I say, if you do approach it, you get a quick answer, because if you find that the answer to your question is, yes, it is going to affect the status, then it's plainly significant, and there can't be any doubt at all that it's disturbance. That's why I'm reluctant to say it's irrelevant, is it would be, so to speak, a silly or a wrong thing to have a look at these matters, but it simply isn't the relevant test.
Yes, you're going to look at Regulation forty-one?
Have you got forty, Regulation forty-one? Can you find the Regulation forty-one, which is in volume two?
Point three.
Which flash? This, we're, look, they, I think, are commenting it in the two thousand and ten regulations, aren't they? Which is tab forty-one.
No, that's two thousand and nine. I'm two thousand and ten, you're right.
Well, I'm not, I'm just checking which regulation they're referring to. They ought to be referring to the two thousand and ten regulations. I presume they're referring to that, to that one. Which, in which case it's page thirty-two. Yep. And those are the matters which are set out in forty-one, two, ability to survive or reproduce, and that, those are matters which are included in particular.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, two. The matters in forty-one, two are set out at page thirty-two of tab forty-one of Authorities' Bundle Three.
I mean, are these in identical terms to the oh-nine regulation?
Yes, Lord, they are. And they, and it says includes in particular, so it's not limited to. It includes in particular, and that's reiterating the words which, Lord, will recall from Article twelve-one B of the habitats directive, but it is not necessary, in order to have disturbance, it isn't necessary to have any of those matters.
Well, I can quite see why you say that actually this top bullet point gives quite the wrong answers. I mean, the fact is that if it, as far as it goes, it's true, it is less likely to amount to disturbance, but if it does come within, it inevitably does.
But that's exactly the way, that's why we see it, which is why it's quite difficult to answer the question.
No, I follow that.
What I think is the answer. Lords, can I turn now to my topic three? And topic three, it concerns the habitats regulations themselves, and I'm going to simply, simply remind your Lordships of what I have already said, that DEFRA has a bad record on transposition, that the original regulations were found wanting in a whole number of respects in United Commission, in Commission against the United Kingdom, and I don't take time to read that, but your Lordships will find it in AB one, tab six, that that then led-
Is this frankly helpful? I mean, you said it, you said it already.
Well, I think, that's why, I think I can take it very quickly. I think I, I think I probably said everything I need to, I won't say anything more about it.
You will, you will bear in mind the strict time table, won't you?
I've got forty minutes left, Lord, I'm aware of that. I'll say no more about it, just reminding your Lordships that it was unfortunately the two thousand and seven regulations which everyone seems to have been working to when writing the bat reports. And in their index, where they referred to legal provisions, they were always referring, there was no reference because of the two thousand and nine regulations. So it does have that effect on what comes later. Because if you're, if you're applying that test, is there a significant effect on significant groups of bats, you might get a different answer, probably would. Topic four then. Lords, can I take you first of all to the relevant statutory provision, which is in Authorities' Bundle Three at tab thirty-eight? Look, I've got that right? No, I've got the wrong reference. I ought to be taking to, I ought to be taking to, no, I don't want forty-one. I want tab thirty-seven, which is the two thousand and nine regulations. Do not be put off by the fact it starts by saying it's nineteen ninety-four because it includes the night, it includes the two thousand and nine amendments. You'll see that they are actually included. And if I could take your Lordships to Regulation three four. Regulation three, four, yeah. Regulation three, four, on page six. Without prejudice to the preceding provisions, every competent authority in the exercise of any of their functions shall regard to the requirements of the habitat direction so far as they may be affected by the exercise of those functions.
So this is three, four of the oh-
Three, four of the original regulations-
Of the nineteen ninety-four regulation as amended.
Yes, the amendment hasn't affected, hasn't affected-
No, 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 quite, but I mean-
Three, four has stayed the same. If your Lordship wants it in the latest ones, the two thousand and ten regulations, it's now Regulation nine five.
I don't, but I mean, these regulations, the ninety-four are as amended up to two thousand and nine.
Yes.
And we've been calling them the two thousand and nine regulations.
Yes, Lord. And, Lord, you can check that most clearly if your Lordships would just look through to Regulation thirty-nine, because that's the key one, which is at page thirty-four. Your Lordship will see that various passages in square brackets have been inserted. So when you get to Regulation thirty-nine on page thirty-four, your Lordship will see lots of square brackets and things. Those are the square brackets which take account of the two thousand and nine changes. And, Lords, the whole section there which we were looking at, Regulation three, is headed implementation of the Directive, and we're all agreed that a planning authority is covered by Regulation three, four. And our case is a very simple one. Let me list the point. First of all, we say that no report to members ever told them the gist of Article twelve-one B. We don't say that it's necessary actually expressly to refer to Article twelve-one B, that would be incantation. We don't say that it's necessary to actually print out the text of it. But what is necessary is three things in any report. First, to tell members that they're dealing with animals which are subject to a strict control. Very important here because they were also dealing with badgers, and in the case of badgers, if you've got a planning permission, that's enough. In our report, there was no distinction drawn between European protected species and other species. So the first thing is you must recognise that you're dealing with animals which are subject to strict control. Particularly odd feature of this case was that the fact there were any European protected species was never mentioned in the officer's report. There was a reference to protected species generally, including badgers, but no distinction drawn between the two. Secondly, it's necessary to tell members that they've got to consider and decide whether any protected animals were going to be deliberately disturbed by the works, including some advice as to what deliberate disturbance meant. That question never mentioned. And thirdly, members have got to be informed that if the proposal involves deliberate disturbance of European animals, and if the local planning authority is still minded to grant planning permission, then the proposal can only go ahead if a licence is obtained and that the power to grant licences is narrowly constrained and would on the facts of this case involve a decision that there were imperative reasons of overriding public importance. that there were imperative reasons of overriding public importance. Now, Lords, so far as the general approach, um, Lord Justice Ward, we say, uh, got that right. And if I could just take your lordships in his judgment to paragraph sixty-one on page twenty-eight. This is in the core volume, core volume in Appendix Part One at tab two, page twenty-eight. At paragraph sixty-one, I won't read it, I simply leave it to your lordships. There is the correct approach set out. And we comment on that at paragraph thirty-nine of the appellant's case and explain that that broadly doesn't...
Just help me with the last three lines of that. If, on the other hand, it's likely that you will grant the licence, the planning committee may grant conditional planning permission. And then there's this rather strange supposed antithesis. If it's uncertain, then it must refuse. I mean, what, what, do you mean if it's unlikely?
Well, that, that means if, if it, if it, if it, that means if it can't reach a clear view as to whether or not it falls into the licensing category.
Well, what does likely mean in this context?
If it's uncertain, if it, if it's uncertain whether or, well, if, this follows from a precautionary principle. If there's a chance, if there's a real risk, that, but he doesn't, uh, when he's, if, on the other hand, it's... I, I think, I, I think Lord Justice Ward was using the word likely in the domestic sense, probable. I suspect that's his meaning there.
Well, I mean, you agree with this paragraph, so I want to know what you're agreeing.
I, I, if, if I substitute the words probably, I agree there. If, on the other hand, it is probable it'll grant the licence.
I see.
The planning committee may grant permission. If it's uncertain, then the precautionary principle comes into play. And this is all taken further in the case of Woolley, which he cites at the end of paragraph sixty and, which he was, and which he was, uh, applying. Now, we, so far as the test, we agree. But the trouble is, on the facts here, members were never told A, that they were dealing with environment, with, uh, European protected species, B, that there was a strict system of protection, C, that the test was deliberate disturbance, D, what that meant, E, anything whatever about, uh, the need for derogations and what would be involved. Now, Lords, all of this is set out in great detail in the, uh, appellant's case, where I set out all the materials before the committee and I set out verbatim everything that was said in the officer's report. And it may be helpful if I just take your lordship to the relevant part of my case, because then, having said that, I needn't to take, take, spend the time taking your lordships through it. And it starts at paragraph forty, which is page twelve of the appellant's case. And I set out the materials. First of all, the detailed environmental assessment, which they could have looked at if they went, if they were conscientious and went to their website. Then the item two is the updated bat survey. Again, they could have found it if they went to the website. Then three, on page fifteen, the decision report. And I set out every relevant paragraph of the decision report, which the court will find in Appendix One at, uh, tab eight. So I don't take it through it in due course. I believe I have set out every passage remotely relevant to the question of the bats between pages fifteen and sixteen of the appellant's case. And then at paragraph fifty-six, I summarise the position. No reference to Regulation three, four, or to the habitats directive, or to Regulation thirty-nine, whether in its two thousand and nine version or previous versions. Second bullet point, paragraph fifty-six, no reference to facts, they're European protections. No reference to whether bats would be disturbed. An erroneous statement that measures would ensure there's no significant adverse impact to bats from these proposals. That's to draw in a wholly irrelevant test of significance, whether it would be significant. That might be relevant in terms of EIA, but was irrelevant in the terms of the habitats directive. And there was no mention of the specific finding that there was going to be the nine years of moderate adverse effect. And there was a repeated concentration on mitigation measures rather than impact. And as the matter is, we hope quite pithily put in our supplementary case, it's like saying to members, are you satisfied that the position of bats will be acceptable? But without telling, telling anyone what was the test of acceptability. And that's the failure. They were never told that you're in the area of strict protection and what they were looking for. Had they been told? It seems to me to be absolutely clear, there could only be one answer. Yes, of course, there's going to be disturbance. In that circumstance, if they had refused permission, I don't think anyone could say it was a winsy unreasonable decision. It would simply be a decision which had attached very considerable weight to the European protected species. But the fact of the matter is, they never addressed any of those matters. Then at page seventeen of my case, I come to the addendum to the report. That doesn't take the matter any further forward, because that was only dealing with the points under Article six. That was the SPA point. And so there was nothing in that which advanced the matter. Then we came to the minutes of the meeting and the matters they were addressed on. And this is a helpful case, because we're told everything that was said. And there's no suggestion that that matter was addressed then. So one has the position. But it's not very often you have a case like this. But I can assert with supreme confidence that Article twelve, one B was not taken into account in any way whatever. Now, there is one paragraph in the officer's report which I don't include in, uh, my, in, in the list which I have mentioned, but which Mr Cameron, um, latches on to. And I want to just take your lordship to it. And for that, I need to ask you, please, to go to the officer's report. And one finds that by going to Appendix Part One and to page one, four, three. Which is the critical paragraph. Eight seventeen. And it's from this report that I have set out in the case everything which is relevant to any considerations of this court. But Mr Cameron, in his case, refers to paragraph eight point one seven at page one sixty, which I don't refer to, so I need to address it. So page one sixty, paragraph eight seventeen. The site is not within any designated sites of importance for nature conservation. However, the site is within thirty metres of the SPA and the Ramsar site. Therefore, the requirements of the habitats regulations need to be considered. But that's a reference to Article six of the habitats regulations, which applies in relation to whether anything could have a significant impact on an SPA. It's Article six as applied by Article seven. It had nothing whatever to do with the section of the habitats direction which we're concerned with, which is Articles twelve and sixteen. And as we point out in our supplementary case, if members did read this report carefully, they perhaps would have been reassured. They'd say, well, the habitats regulations are relevant to the SPA, but that is taken into account under eight eighteen. And we're being told there's no problem about the SPAs. We've discharged any necessary duties under the habitats regulations. As I say, what there isn't is anywhere where their members are told to pay attention to the requirements of the habitats regulations. Now, there's one other matter which Mr Cameron mentions, which I need to mention. It said that, well, there were various local plan policies about the importance of species and members were told that, uh, the scheme accorded with the local plan. And therefore, in that way, they've taken into account Article twelve, one B. Lords, I'm afraid that simply doesn't work. You've got to look at the particular system of strict protection. And that is what they failed to do.
Well, what about the reference under the same head of nature conservation impact in paragraph eight point one nine, about eight lines up from the bottom? The surveys also identified the presence of a diversity of bat species which are protected, using the trees alongside the trap for foraging. What's that referring to?
Lords, that's entirely correct. But what, but there was never, no, they were never told that it was a different form of protection from that of the badgers, that there, that there was a form of strict protection, that the test was whether there were going to be any deliberate disturbance. And that in the case of European protected species, you'd have to go into the area of a licence. Whereas in the connection of the, uh, other species, which, which they were concerned, which were bats and certain types of grass snakes and so forth, the planning permission would override anything. It's simply not spelt out.
Well, the, the badgers, there's no reference, they're being protected. So bat species seem to be something special.
Lords, the, the, the answer, I, I'm not saying that members were unaware that there was some protection for bats. But what they're not told is the thing which they really need to know, which is that it is a strict protection. And what is the nature of the test? There's that if it's simply a de minimis disturbance, it doesn't matter. If, on the other hand, it is a certain negative impact, then the scheme cannot go ahead without an Article sixteen licence. That is what was never made. I say, well, the passage of Manchester Transport Intentionary, that is, I think, mentioned in the case. I hope I have listed every single one of those, those references. And it, it's, I'm not suggesting this was deliberate at all. I don't know how it's happened, but it's just happened that, uh, the key importance of European protected species hasn't been mentioned. And in the result, Hampshire has not applied a strict protection as is required by, uh, Article twelve, one of the habitats directive. Uh, because one, one does notice that in eight nineteen, they're dealt with along with the badgers in the same paragraph. Whereas in eight eighteen, which is the paragraph which deals with the habitat regulations and the European matters, they're not dealt with at all.
I mean, you quote the eight nineteen bit, page sixteen of your case, and you put in italics, understandably, the reference to significant adverse impact.
The significant adverse impact, um, yes, Lord. The fact is that they are not told the appropriate test.
No, but that's in the connection for mitigation strategy.
Because, you see, that's all in eight nineteen is dealing with the question of the mitigation strategy. The mitigation strategy will ensure there's no significant adverse impact. A, that was the wrong test.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And B, it's dealing with mitigation and it ignores the fact that there's nine years before mitigation. But I think your lordship's one, or probably two steps ahead of me. Um, Lord, I don't intend then to say anything more on that head. And I want to spend my last twenty minutes on the, uh, discretion point. And can I start this, please, by taking your lordships back to the way the matter was dealt with by Lord Justice Ward? And this is at pages thirty-three and thirty-four in Appendix Part One, tab two. Now, in paragraph seventy-four, he'd reached the conclusion that there was no evidence that the species survival was in jeopardy. And therefore, he held, looking to the long term, that's penultimate sentence of paragraph seventy-four, no evidence of any activity which would, as a matter of law, constitute a disturbance. That, we submit, is plainly wrong. In paragraph seventy-five, he says, as I've already concluded. Now, that's a cross-reference back to paragraph forty-five. And it's there he's dealing with the roost at Oakden Wood and Titchborne Way. But the significant thing is about six lines from the bottom of page twenty-three. Lord Justice Ward says, there's no evidence whatsoever that the risk is so great that the mortality rate will have any adverse impact on the population of these bats in the long term. Occasional death and so forth, trivial disturbance, wouldn't lead to a negative impact on the species as a whole, so as to have any ecological importance. So you can see there, again, he's using the wrong test. And that nullifies the result of seventy-five. Then seventy-six, I'm not concerned with, because I wasn't given leave to appeal on Article twelve, one D. So then comes to seventy-seven. This is the only place where he deals with discretion. I am reinforced in these conclusions by the very firm response of Natural England. Moreover, if contrary to my view there were a disturbance, it's overwhelmingly likely that Natural England would grant a licence for the work to be done and planning commission can be granted accordingly. And therefore, it fails. Now, Lords, one pauses and takes breath there. Your lordships are very familiar that, uh, when it comes to the discretion, there are two starting points. First of all, that in domestic law, the court will only exercise discretion to refuse relief in very limited circumstances, of which the one which one is most frequently encountered is where the, it is inevitable that the decision would be the same regardless of the error of law. And in our case, we set out the authorities dealing with that matter, which are the Court of Appeal in the case of Simplex, which has stood for, uh, many years. And that is, uh, Bundle Two, Tab thirty-one. And now, most often cited, the Court of Appeal in Authorities Bundle Two, Tab nineteen, Pam Smith versus the North East Derbyshire Primary Care Trust, a ruling of Lord Justice May and Lord Justice Keen. So two administrative lawyers, uh, or people with great administrative experience in the judgement. So that's the primary matter. And secondly, that where you have a European obligation at stake, a breach of the European obligation, the court will apply an even higher standard than the one of inevitability, that arising out of the court's own obligation. So it is an obligation specifically on this court under Article, what is now Article four, brackets, three of the Treaty on European Union. And just, if I could just take your lordships to it, it's in Authorities Bundle One, Tab nine. To some of your lordships, this may be more familiar as Article ten, but it's now, and it was Article ten at the time of the decision, but now we're, now we're into this. So this is the, is Authorities Bundle One, Tab nine, the Treaty on European Union, Article four, little three. The member state shall take any appropriate measure to ensure fulfilment of obligations. And then, most importantly, the last proviso, the member state shall facilitate the achievement of the union's tasks and refrain from any measure which could jeopardise the attainment of the union's objectives. And your lordships will be extremely familiar with the old case of Barclay, where Lady Dido Barclay complained that the Secretary of State hadn't carried out an environmental appraisal of the works for the Fulham Football Stadium, notwithstanding that they... notwithstanding that they would encroach by a couple of feet into the River Thames. And it was conceded that there ought to have been an EIA. The Court of Appeal robustly said it wouldn't have made any difference. Plain and obvious, this scheme would get planning permission. One of the most formidable divisions of this court's predecessor and House of Lords, led by Lord Justices Bingham and Hoffman, said that won't do. And their reasoning was based on what was then Article ten. And that's the authority you find in Volume two at tab sixteen. Now, I'm not saying that there may not be other cases where to grant relief would plainly, for some reason, be absurd. And Edwards, which came before your lordships, and I, Lord Brown and Lord Walker and Lord Mansour, I think were all involved in the case of Edwards.
They're all in it again on Thursday.
And, well. I was going to say, have a happy day. So far, so far as Edwards, your lordship may remember, that things had so far moved on that the particular bit of environmental information which hadn't been supplied had been overtaken by new information and so forth. And so it was entirely pointless by that stage. So that's a special category of case. But on the facts of this case, one cannot say even that it's inevitable that planning permission would be granted. Now, can I invite you to be patient with me for the last ten minutes? And just consider two circumstances, which one looks at. The first is if you look at the position as at July the thirty-first, two thousand and nine, when we know by a majority of one, only, the scheme got planning permission. Can the court say that it is inevitable that if members had been properly advised, one member might not have changed sides? My submission, it is simply quite impossible to reach that conclusion. Furthermore, members might have spoken up and said, hang on. We think that this scheme's got significant environmental effects and it should have an environmental assessment. Again, the court can't be certain that that wouldn't have happened. And that's the very high domestic test. Is it inevitable that directly informed, correctly informed, they'd have reached the same conclusion? And a moment ago, I referred to the Wensbury test. And I just want to come back to that, because it's an important one. If your lordships feel that if they had actually refused permission, that decision could have been challenged as Wensbury unreasonable, well, then I have a problem. But as it seems to me, it'd be quite impossible to say that members who refused permission because of their concern for several European protected species, which on the materials before them were going to be disturbed, I can't see how that could possibly be challenged as an unreasonable conclusion. I can't say, and the court can't say, what would have happened on the thirty-first of July. But I don't have to show anything more than that you cannot say for certain that it's inevitable that that would have been the outcome. And there's an important passage in the Pam Smith case, which I've set out in paragraph seventy-four of my case, where Lord Justice May says, it's page twenty-one, paragraph seventy-four of my case, probability is not enough. The defendants would have to show that the decision would inevitably be the same. And the court must not unconsciously stray from its proper province of reviewing the propriety of the decision-making process, mustn't stray into the forbidden territory of evaluating the substantial merits of the decision. Lords, that's, in my submission, a strong but wholly orthodox approach to the domestic law on discretion. If your lordships then remember that we're actually in the European area, we're following Barclay, the Court of Appeal's approach there, say it was inevitable isn't enough, then my case is an A forty all right case.
Barclay's a, a, a different case though, isn't it? Because there was a statutory procedure for an EIA which wasn't followed.
Yes, but lords, I'm not sure when you really, when one really contemplates whether it is. Because if the matter had to be reconsidered, the public also would have been expressing views on the fact that European protected species were informed. Because as Mr Justice Collins pointed out in Cathcote, one of the points of an officer's report is it's made available to the public so that they also can comment on it. And so, lords, in my submission, there isn't that complete distinction which is sometimes made with the Barclay case. I think on practice, the public would be equally involved here. But then, the alternative approach to discretion is to consider, not at the thirty-first of July, but now, if your lordships are wondering, well, now, what would happen if we were to quash the decision now? Presumably, it would be remitted to the members. It'll all take a few months, they'll have to do some more work. But let's assume it goes before the committee, the same application in, let's say, February or March next year.
We know, is this assuming that the work is continuing?
Well, lords, and, and, and let's, let's, lords, that's a matter for your lordships. What, 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 just, 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 just consider whether or not they continue. Lords, there, again, you can't say what the result inevitably would be. In the first place, there'll have to be new bat surveys. And the respondent accepts that there would have to be new bat surveys now that one is a few years on. After all, the late, the last remotely thorough bat surveys were July of two thousand and nine. So as time has elapsed. Secondly, the whole of the planning and financial situation has changed. And we know that all sorts of schemes, which were thought to be very good, are no longer being funded. And indeed, the whole of the planning framework on which this scheme was promoted, which was for new houses down in that part of the world, that RSS, has been revoked by the new government. That would have to be taken into account. But then, lords, there is a third matter. And this is, I think, the last matter to which I need to refer, your lordship. And for this purpose, lords, could your lordships please take the Appendix part two plans? And go in them in tab ten to page two, nine, five. And lords, I get to ask that a little bundle, please, be distributed, which is all materials which Mr Cameron knows about, about this particular area. Can we come as quickly as possible, because I've only got two, five, four minutes?
I mean, as it's being distributed.
As it being distributed, I think I can make the point, and then, and then I won't avoid, I'll meet, I'll meet one of them. The crucial thing is that the triangle through which that return road from the busway down to Tichborne Way, that triangle has now, the, an application has been made to register it as a village green, which will no doubt give Lords Walker, Hale, Brown and Carr a base. Not surprisingly, it's a green bit. And we understand that after a public inquiry, the inspector has reported that that bit triangle should be registered as a village green. Now, unless the county council as registration authority decides not to accept Mr Vivian Chapman QC's recommendation, the whole scheme is going to have to be looked at again in that area. Because although in the case of Lewis, there's some tolerance for landowners, there's no way in which you can construct a road onto, along a village green without committing a criminal offence under the eighteen fifty-nine Act and the eighteen seventy-six Act. Now, I don't say this necessarily scuppers the whole scheme, but it does mean that the whole matter will have to be reviewed. It may be that you can turn off in some other way onto Tichborne Way. But the new application itself will almost certainly need an environmental impact appraisal. Because Schedule three of the Environmental Impact Regulation says you've got to take into account the effect on a park. And a village green, which the inhabitants have got rights of recreation on, is plainly a park. So, well, I simply say there are a whole series of uncertainties. So if you look to the future date, again, you certainly can't say it is inevitable. And lords, in my submission, this is one of those cases where this court needs to be bold. And I remind your lordships of the great work of Ronald Dawkins, Law's Empire, which curiously, your colleague Lord Newburger cited from in his peroration to the bar conference in his keynote speech on Saturday. One of the key cases he relies on throughout is a case concerning the Teleco Dam project in the United States. It's a case Tennessee Valley Authority against Hill, where the Supreme Court in nineteen seventy-eight stopped work on a dam on which over a hundred million had already been spent. Eventually, some years later, a special measure was passed to enable it to carry on. But Chief Justice Burger, in his judgment, said, I got to construe the law. Now, I'm not suggesting that my bats are as important as the particular, looks pretty boring, but it's a stale data fish, a little fish which was concerned there. But the point was that the American Supreme Court cut its teeth. And they said, the environment matters. And where there's a breach of law, then we must stop the project. And all we ask of you is that although our facts may differ, be less extreme, that the same result should follow here. And if there is overwhelming merit in the case for the scheme, well, then it can come forward again in a further planning provision and be dealt with properly in the light of European law, which at present has not been properly addressed. Lords, I hope I'm on one o'clock and that I have met the timetable.
Thank you very much, Mr George. Mr Jones? I hope you'll appear, Mr Cameron, at two o'clock.